I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 21st, 2017 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Mrs. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
We've got Troop 60 with us tonight, and I'd like to invite them up to help me lead the pledge. Gentlemen, if you want to come up in front here.
That's correct.
Posted in the back of the council chambers. We also have another presentation tonight. Mr. Andrew Rainbow with Sarpy County Economic Developments with us to give us a third quarter report. Just partially because we've got a number of people here in the audience and then just people that watch it, I always like to give a little bit of education on our economic development. Sarpy County Economic Development is a cooperative body. It's actually a not-for-profit that handles large economic development projects in Sarpy County. So when somebody's doing a major site selection, like a Facebook project, they kind of take the lead to identify the right sites, get them here, sell them on the area, and then help them through the entitlement process. And what's nice about Sarpy County Economic Development is they're pretty agnostic about the different borders of cities. They just want to find the right spot for the major economic opportunity. But really what we do is we work really cooperative along the, across the entire Omaha metro region. So if you're sitting down in Florida, Omaha's just a big dot on the map. That map's about eight counties when you dive into it, and it includes three counties in Iowa. So Mills, Potawatomi, and Harrison are part of the greater Omaha metro area. And every one of those counties has its own economic development corporation, just like Sarpy. But then they all join together and they are part of the Greater Omaha Partnership. So what's really nice about that model, and I think it's pretty unique in the nation, is the Greater Omaha Partnership is just trying to win that major opportunity to the bubble. Find somebody in Florida to come to the bubble of the Omaha metro area. And then at that point, once they start identifying which county probably is the most opportune site, then that county-specific economic development corporation steps in and takes the lead. And then when the city is identified where it probably belongs, then the city joins the team. So all the way from just the initial identification of the Omaha metro, all the way down to it's going to the city Papillion, it's a really logical process, and it's all hands-off. And it's one of the reasons we win the Facebook projects. And Andrew is the Executive Director for Sarpy County. And with that, you want to give us a third quarter report?
Thank you for that great introduction, Mayor Black. Again, Andrew Rainbow, Executive Director of Sarpy County EDC. Thanks for having me this evening. I passed out two handouts earlier before the meeting started. One is our third quarter economic indicator report, and I'll start with that. The second is our goal sheet or kind of our progress report for Sarpy EDC on activities that we track. But again, I'll start with our economic indicators. I apologize. I must have missed some off the printer there. I don't think I have enough for all staff, but all elected officials should have one. Again, as usual, a very good report for the third quarter of 2017, starting with one of the things we track, net taxable sales, which again, we always like to mention is not gross tax receipts, but this is a measure of reported sales that may or may not be taxed within the vicinity. We use it as kind of a proxy for GDP, I guess, for Sarpy County and the cities within Sarpy County. And you can see, most all entities had a good year as compared, or a good quarter compared to 2016. And again, I failed to mention that this is always a quarter behind. So this is the number for the second quarter of 2017. You see Papillion had almost $150 million in net taxable sales as compared to almost, to about $144 million last year. And I'm sorry, I should put this up on the monitor there. I apologize. All right. Am I controlling that? I don't know. All right. Let's see if we can. All right. I might have too much fun with that. Okay. Building, moving on down to building permit valuations. Again, good news. You can see for Papillion, in third quarter of 2017, we had about 77, almost 78 million compared to about 75 last year. So again, growth. You can see the county was down a little bit, but we anticipate that the county will continue to shrink in that capacity as the cities continue to grow. Just basic geography there. And you can see, most everyone had a better year, better quarter this year as compared to last year. The small exception being Bellevue, which is down a little bit, but they've got a few more housing developments coming online, and housing is what drives a lot of these totals here. You can see, we've had one industrial subdivision platted, which is something that we always track because for a long time there, we didn't have very many industrial subdivisions platted. And so in Papillion, we had one there on 120th and Valley Ridge there, a continuation of the Pink Industrial Park. Single-family housing subdivisions platted. We had an enormous quarter for that with 1,202 lots, I'm sorry, platted across the county, majority of which were in Papillion, I believe, a little over 700. That's, as long as I've been here, that's the biggest quarter we've ever seen. If you go back to the, you go back to like 2005, and we had a lot of platted lots. And then obviously, we had the housing bust. And since then, we've really been burning through more lots than we've been developing. So this is kind of inevitable. We really needed to have a year where we had more building, sorry, more lots than building permits, and this seems to be that year. That's not to say that we haven't been having a decent year as far as housing permits go. On the single-family housing permit side, I apologize for the fold there on my paper, but you can see that we've had about 256 compared to 223 last year. So we're still outpacing last year there. And in Papillion, this is just for the third quarter, I apologize. You can see, we've had, we had 84, well, compared to 75 there. So we had about 700 lots permitted and about 84 housing units permitted. So on the multi-family side, we haven't seen a whole lot so far this quarter, but I believe when you look at year-to-date, we're about where we were last year as well. So one of the big numbers that I wanted to point out is the labor force statistics there. We've kind of hovered between 89 and 90,000 and slowly moving that up. When we've got such low unemployment rate, that's something we really need to see. We really need to grow our labor force. And you can see, in July of 17, we almost hit 94,000. And so that's a great sign for us. We need to see that number continue to constantly stay up there. We always see it bubble up a little bit in the summertime, but we'd like to see that continue to grow. I'll move on to our goal sheet there. So one of the things that we always track, of course, is landed projects. That's really the bread and butter of what we do, is try to increase capital investment in the number of jobs, primary jobs in Sarpy County Papillion. You can see, in the third quarter, we landed one project this year as compared to two last year. And year-to-date, we've only landed three projects. So it's been a slower year for us as far as landed projects go. But when you look over at capital investment, you can see, we've had about $1.2 billion in capital investment. So the vast majority of that is in the Facebook project. So we haven't landed a lot of projects, although we did land the largest project we ever, we've ever landed to date. So in the third quarter, we landed a $15 million project. That was the purchase of the former Cabela's data center here in Papillion, a company we've been working with for several years, actually was trying to enter the market. They bought some land where they were going to build their own standalone data center. But the opportunity with Cabela's came up, and they pursued that. So we're actually excited to have that opportunity because we are short with buildable sites here. And so that frees up their former site for another project. So it's unfortunate that we lose Cabela's here, but we didn't lose the jobs, and we've got actually more opportunity for expansion, I feel. Looking down at our project pipeline, you can see, we've had a pretty busy year. Typically, we work about 32 opportunities per year, and that would be new-to-market opportunities. We've had 31 overall opportunities through the third quarter, and 28 of those, you can't really see it on the overhead though, but 28 of those are new-to-market. So we've already surpassed our annual average for projects. So we've got a strong pipeline. We're just having trouble landing those projects at the moment. Year-to-date, we've had nine prospects visits. We've had one in the third quarter, which is odd. We've had a lot in the first quarter, and it kind of slowed down throughout the year. And now, at the end of the year, in the fourth quarter, we've had several actually. So kind of a, we usually have kind of a bell curve where most of those visits come in the middle of the year. This year, they came on the ends. We did have, we have completed 40 existing business visits across the county, and that's where we go and meet with existing employers to make sure that they're getting what they need from us and from the market in general. So the types of projects that we've been working is not unusual so far this year. We've had a couple funky projects that we labeled as other. One sports entertainment project, which is typical for us. We get somebody calling it, wondering where they can build some ball fields. But you can see, our bread and butter there is warehouse distribution. We've had eight new-to-market projects, nine office service projects, which also include data centers, and eight manufacturing projects. We've opened a few from our business retention calls. We had one office service retention expansion project and two manufacturing projects. So overall, I would say, we've been having a very good year. Again, we're struggling a little bit to land some projects. We'll land a couple more specifically here in Papillion, the R&amp;R Business Park. We haven't landed that yet. As we're kind of waiting for them to pull a building permit, but that's imminent. And so we'll land that one and maybe a couple other here before the end of the year. But I think we're also set up strong for next year, and we'll continue to work to open up more sites. We're going through, we're finishing up our, excuse me, strategic planning process right now. And our big focus for the next few years is going to be site development, to continue to work to open up sites. And that's going to mostly focus on infrastructure extension, because that's, obviously, everyone knows that's our issue here is more sewer. So if we can continue to push that forward, I'm sure we'll have better opportunity to land more projects in the future. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate that. Anybody have any questions? Thanks again for the partnership. Thank you. If nobody objects, I want to move item F1 before D1. F1's got, is the fireworks application. There are some people here that are the applicants, and I'd like to move that before the public hearing, just free up some room and respect their time. So if there's no objection, I want to move F1 before D1. Next is the Administrator's Report. Ms. Coomer, please.
Good evening. Lincoln Street is now open. There are still a few items that need to be finished, like permanent striping that will be finished in the spring, but overall, Lincoln Street is pretty much complete. And then just a reminder, the groundbreaking for the new community center and fieldhouse will be next Thursday, November 30th, at 3:00 PM at the construction site on Lincoln Road. All council members should have received an invite to that, and the public is encouraged to attend. So if you can get to help get the word out. Also, another quick reminder that Winter Wonderland starts this Saturday at 4:00 PM downtown. The Papillion Community Foundation added some new events this year. Also new this year, North Washington Street between First and Sixth Street will be entirely closed as well during the events. And then a thank you to all the city employees that helped set things up for this event. A lot of work goes into it every year, and we really appreciate it. And then, the National Research Center has completed Papillion's National Citizen Survey. Overall, the report concluded that Papillion is an exceptional place to live, with 96% of the respondents rating that the quality of life in Papillion is either excellent or good. The city is in the process of analyzing those results, and the summary community livability report will be posted on the city's website within the next week. And finally, as most of you know, Shawn Hoseth has been promoted to Chief Building Official to replace Brian Craig. In addition to his education and numerous inspector certifications, Shawn has demonstrated significant leadership qualities, both internally and externally, over the past 11 years with the city. His first day in his new role will begin on December 4th. That's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Next is consent. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F1, Resolution R170209. A resolution to approve applications for the 2017 winter fireworks season, December 29th through December 31st. There are three applications, all being taken with a single vote if there's no objection. Number one is Belino fireworks. Number two is Papillion spirit football. And number three is Echo softball. And the applicants are here and in attendance if there are any questions. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R170209?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is, back to the regular agenda, item D1. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R2 Single Family Residential Medium Density and MU Mixed Use for the property legally described as attractive land located in the east half of the northwest quarter, lying east of the abandoned Missouri Pacific Railroad, together with tax lots 1A, 1B, and 2. In the west half of the northeast quarter, all in Section 31, Township 14, North Range 12 East, except those parts taken for Highway 370 right-of-way, generally located on the southeast and southwest corners of 126th Street and Highway 370. The applicant is Founders Ridge LLC. Is there a council member that will introduce?
All that I can do.
Introduced by Councilwoman Kluk. Item E1, Ordinance 1791, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 85 Animals of the Papillion Municipal Code to Allow Many Pigs as Pets Within the City's Corporate Limits, introduced by Councilman Mumgarth. This is a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing. I will first call for proponents, those that want to speak in favor. I will then call for opponents, those that want to speak against. And if there's anybody neutral, come up after that. Testimony will be limited to five minutes. And if you'd state your name for the record, welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Mark Langen, Vice President of Field Operations for the Nebraska Humane Society. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to talk about mini pigs in Papillion. I'm here to answer any questions, and I do have some suggestions on the proposed ordinance, if you'd like me to get into that.
Go ahead and mention them, because the next council meeting is when we'll do council discussion. Just for the sake of the public, tonight is for us to take testimony and hear. It's not discussion back and forth. We're here to listen and take testimony. At the next council agenda is when there will be council debate, and if the council has questions, they'll ask. But it is appropriate for council to ask questions if they have them. But no one of our going in debate. Go ahead.
Thank you. So the Nebraska Humane Society contracts with the city Papillion for animal control services, as well as the other jurisdictions in the metro area. I will tell you that mini pigs are pretty maintenance-free for us at the Nebraska Humane Society. Currently, the city of Omaha allows mini pigs, and as of 2017, we have 24 licensed mini pigs in the city of Omaha. Springfield allows mini pigs, we have two. And per Councilman Mumgarth's request, I did a little statistical analysis of calls we've received regarding mini pigs over the past five years, 2012 up to year-to-date. And we've only received 42 calls total in that entire time in regards to complaints on mini pigs. Vast majority of those have been mini pigs that maybe got out of the yard, and we returned the mini pigs to the owner. We've had no mini pig bites during that particular situation, particular timeframe. I will say, during that same timeframe, we've had 92,000 calls in regards to dog complaints. So 42 for mini pigs, 92,000 for dogs. And I had a chance to check over the proposed city ordinance. I do have some suggestions on it. The ordinance calls for a weight restriction of up to 100 pounds. In the city of Omaha, this past fall, we changed the mini pig ordinance at the request of mini pig owners, and rightfully so, to increase the maximum weight from 100 pounds to 200 pounds. It's very tough to keep an adult mini pig under the weight of 100 pounds. And people automatically think if it's 200 pounds, it's going to be the size of a regular pig. And that's not correct. Even a 200-pound mini pig is not going to be as large as a normal pig that you find on like a farm or anything like that. But again, if the ordinance passes with 100-pound maximum weight, we're going to kind of set mini pig owners up to fail here in the city Papillion, as we did in Omaha, because it's very difficult to keep mini pigs under the weight of 100 pounds. Adult mini pigs can vary from 60 to 175 pounds. And again, we don't want to see people forced into a situation of having to get rid of their pigs here in Papillion because they can't keep the weight under 100 pounds. Secondly, Ordinance 85-49, Subsection B states that the only time people would be allowed in Papillion to have their mini pigs out in the yard would be for the mini pig to exercise or go to the bathroom. I would tell you, from our perspective, that is unenforceable for the Humane Society, because if we see a mini pig in a backyard, we're not going to stop and ask the owner if they're exercising the pig or letting the pig go to the bathroom. And I will tell you also, letting a mini pig run loose in a backyard for a few hours is not a bad thing. They don't bark like dogs. They don't root like normal pigs, meaning dig holes and things like that. We just have very few complaints on mini pigs. We really feel as though that particular ordinance should be taken out because it's unenforceable and really not fair to the mini pig owner and the mini pig. And then lastly, the ordinance, as written, talks about vaccination requirements for mini pigs. I'm not a veterinarian, but I learned a lot changing the Omaha ordinance last fall. And in consultation with the Douglas County Health Department, Nebraska Department of Agriculture, the State Veterinarian, Iowa State Vet School, UNL Diagnostic Lab, and community vets, we realized that mini pigs should not be required to be vaccinated for all those potential diseases that are listed in your ordinance. And we took all of those out of the Omaha ordinance. In consultation with our vets, there is no prescribed rabies vaccination for mini pigs. There are some off-brands, apparently that can be used, but those shouldn't be designated in a city ordinance. So in consultation with all these agencies, we removed all the vaccination requirements for mini pigs from the Omaha ordinance, and I highly suggest you do that here also. If an owner wants to get their mini pig vaccinated against rabies, they should consult with their veterinarian on that. And again, there are some off-brands, but nothing that's specific enough to put into a city ordinance. So having said that, I'll open it up for questions.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay. I have several questions on things that you've indicated. Some suggestions for improvements on our ordinance. And thank you for giving those. We'd like to have the best we can do here. Let me explain why some of those things are in there, and you give me your views on necessity for that. Okay, the 100-pound limit. Your suggestion going to 200 pounds. Well, what the goal was, was to distinguish a mini pig from what people generically would call a barnyard hog. I have no intention to authorize people to turn their backyard into a pigsty or, you know, a hog lot. How do you do that? I mean, how do you distinguish a mini pig from the barnyard hog if not by weight?
Well, I've done some research on barnyard hogs. I'm a city boy at heart.
Okay.
So I had to research it. But barnyard hogs, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody here who's raised them, it can get to be 300, 400, 500 pounds, which they're easily distinguishable from a 175-pound mini pig. I mean, the size difference is just obvious. But I'm just saying that we found in Omaha, which we, why we changed the ordinance, everybody who had mini pigs, all 24 licensed owners, were violating the ordinance because their mini pigs weighed 125 pounds or 150 pounds, and they were over the 100-pound maximum. So nobody was really satisfying the ordinance, because mini pigs get to be more than 100 pounds at maturity.
Okay. Well, I've heard people express, dog owners express concerns that, you know, 100-pound dog's a pretty good-sized dog, and certainly a 200-pound dog would be a pretty good-sized dog. So the image is that a 200-pound pig ain't many. How do we reconcile that?
I think mini pigs are a lot more solid and compact than a 150-pound dog, which would, you know, like a Great Dane is about this tall, probably weighs about 150 pounds. The mini pigs that I've seen, and I've seen a lot of them over the past couple of years, were probably about a foot and a half off the ground, and fat, and happy, and weigh probably like 150 pounds. So I mean, they're easily distinguishable, again, from a barnyard hog. And they're much smaller in stature than a large dog.
So in your
They're just more compact.
Okay. In your view, the density of a pig would tell us that if we go to 200 pounds, we're not going to have some large animal there?
That's my, that's my opinion, yes. And we're not seeing that in Omaha, nor have we seen it. In the 13 years I've been there, at the Humane Society, we have not had any what I consider to be barnyard hogs in people's yards.
Okay. I see that you have a total of, well, in Omaha, 24 mini pigs licensed in 2017. And it's grown over the years, it looks like. Is that a pretty accurate assessment of how many mini pigs there are in Omaha?
Oh, I'm sure there's probably a few around that aren't licensed, but I'd say that's a fairly accurate number. Because I think if people, neighbors saw a mini pig that they didn't think was licensed or abiding by the law, we'd probably find out about it. So it's close.
You have to license
There's probably a few that are, that are there that aren't licensed.
Okay. You have to license dogs in Omaha, right?
Correct. And we get about a 60% compliance rate on licensing of dogs.
Oh, in your assess, in your view, are you getting at least that, if not better, for mini pigs?
Yes. I'd say better.
Okay. Your suggestion that maybe we don't need to say that mini pigs must stay indoors. Well, let me tell you what my goal was there. I don't want backyards to turn into pigsty's. And so the ordinance says, you cannot house your pig outdoors. Tell me how we can avoid the pigsty without saying you have to make it a house pet.
Well, you've already got ordinances in place here in Papillion in regards to public nuisance, odors created by pets, unsanitary conditions created by whether it be dogs or chickens or, in this case, mini pigs. So if we found somebody that had a pig or two in their backyard, and they weren't abiding by the city ordinance, feces was piling up, flies were coming in, neighbors were complaining of odors, we have ordinances in place around any of that situation already. We wouldn't have to pass any new ordinances.
Okay. Well, in Omaha and the other cities that authorize mini pigs, how do you go about enforcing their ordinances? Is that by complaint, or how is that done?
Normally by complaint from neighbors. And then we have the authority to come in and issue citations. In some situations, we have the authority to get search warrants and impound animals living in, you know, dirty conditions. So you already have the ordinances in place to take care of that scenario that you talked about in regards to, I wouldn't think it would happen, to be honest with you. But in case somebody did have pigs, and it represented or looked like a farmyard or hog yard, we could come in and take care of that situation pretty quick.
Okay. I see that you've had, in five years, you've had 42 total calls about mini pigs. And you say, most of those are about strays?
Yes.
Okay. And then you've had now over 92,000 complaints about dogs in, you know, in the three cities, Omaha, Bellevue, and Papillion. Okay. What kind of complaints are you getting about dogs?
Dogs running loose, barking dogs. Were probably the top two complaints that we get on dogs.
How about dog bites?
They wouldn't be in the top. We usually investigate about 600 dog bites a year, metro area-wise. Last year in Papillion, you guys had 14 dog bites.
Okay. I noticed that Papillion regulates ownership of dogs. And in part, we prohibit what we call dangerous dogs. Do the other cities do something similar with that for dangerous dogs?
Yes.
Well, why in the world do we need to regulate and have ordinances that talk about dangerous dogs?
Well, primarily, it's a public safety matter. I mean, a dangerous dog would pose danger to the public. That's why there's laws in place in Papillion, as well as the other cities, that allow the Humane Society and the Police Department to confiscate dogs that they consider to be a danger to the public, cite the owner, get the owner into the court system, let the judge make the determination as to the disposition of the dog. So that's exclusively a public safety matter as to why we regulate dangerous dogs.
And have, in your experience, has that occurred in the cities that regulate dangerous dogs? Do you have to go through that process?
Oh, without a doubt, we do, yes.
In your experience, in the cities that authorize mini pigs, have you had to go through the process of trying to get rid of a dangerous mini pig?
No. We've had no mini big, mini pig bites that I can recall in the past five years.
Well, okay, the vaccinations. I would be concerned about mini pigs presenting a health issue to other animals around, you know, the neighboring dog, neighboring cat, anything like that. But you're indicating But you're indicating that that's not necessary. Well, why, why would we not be concerned as a health issue and take care of that by vaccinations?
When we researched changing the Omaha ordinance earlier this year, it was brought to our attention by both community vets who took care of people's mini pigs, and by our own vets, that these vaccinations that were listed were not a public safety hazard and were not necessary for the pigs. We actually had community vets calling us saying, this is ridiculous that this mini pig owner has to vaccinate against all this long list of diseases. So I kind of took that to heart, and I challenged our veterinarians to contact these agencies that have listed on this sheet to see if they agreed. And the Douglas County Health Department did, along with the State Veterinarian, the Iowa State Vet School, UNL Diagnostic Lab, and three or four community vets, all were in agreement to a T that mini pigs did not pose a danger in regards to the diseases listed in the Omaha ordinance, which is why we took all that out.
Well, okay, the Nebraska Humane Society contracts with several different metro area cities to enforce their pet or animal regulations, right?
Correct.
Oh. Well, does the Humane Society take a position on how those regulations should be developed and carried out?
Yes.
Well, first off, why does the health, why does the Humane Society care how cities regulate their animals, their pets?
Well, it's primarily the two reasons. One would be the public safety aspect of animals mingling with human beings, and the public nuisance that animals can pose in an urban area, such as dirty conditions, barking dogs, and things like that. So primarily, public safety and public nuisance are the reason that we work with city councils such as yourself to pass the best ordinances that we can.
Well, okay, if you were giving us guidance on how we should go about regulating the pets that people have, what kind of guidance can you give about what should be the basis for our regulations?
In regards to all animals?
Just animals in general, but specifically mini pigs. Why should we do it?
Since the published agenda item to the public was mini pigs, stay on the topic of mini pigs, and then we won't venture out from there, just so we stay with what we published.
See, I want to, I want to regulate mini pigs similarly to how we regulate other animals, because we do it. We've been doing it for years. And I'm look, I'm struggling for, well, you guys are the, you guys are the experts for the moment. What should be the basis for creating our regulations for those?
The ordinance should, should deal with public safety concerning mini pigs and any public nuisance factors that mini pigs can pose. And the ordinance as written with these suggested changes that the Nebraska Humane Society has, we are very comfortable enforcing the mini pig ordinance here in Papillion, and we don't anticipate any problems with mini pigs.
Okay, thank you. You've answered my questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, thank you. Couple of questions.
Yep. Let's jump to, oh, you're back on, okay.
Thank you. So you had mentioned about the size of the mini pig. So you recommend increasing from 100 to 200 pounds.
Correct.
So what's the life expectancy? I think I know the answer, but what typically would be the life expectancy of a, of a mini pig?
I thought I researched everything possible for tonight, and I did not research life expectancy.
So, so I think, in, in my research, I think there's a potential up to 15 years, if not longer. So one of the questions would be is that if you, if you are a mini pig and you buy one, it's a small mini pig, and it grows to 200 pounds, what resources are available if a owner would say, I don't want that pig anymore? What, what, what's the avenues that they can take to get rid of that?
There's actually mini pig sanctuaries around the Midwest that they could transport the pig to. There's mini pig rescues. So there are resources available for people to take their mini pig out of the city of Papillion if it exceeds the weight limit without having to euthanize the mini pig.
Even if it doesn't exceed, they could always take it to one of these sanctuaries. Do you know what they're located within the Omaha metro area?
There's some in the Midwest area, or, and I, obviously, they could bring it to us at the Nebraska Humane Society at any time. We'll take it out their hands and find an appropriate place to place the mini pig.
Okay. The other thing is, you're recommending that vaccinations not be required as part of our ordinance. Are there, are there vets here locally that, that are trained and knowledgeable about addressing, you know, any diseases that a pig might get?
Well, the, I'm not sure in Papillion if there are. We dealt with some Omaha veterinarians in regards to the ordinance change that we did in the fall, and they were quite adept at the fact that they didn't feel as though the rabies vaccinations and/or the other vaccinations were necessary.
Okay.
We didn't deal with any Papillion vets, because it was an Omaha ordinance change at that time.
Gotcha. The, some of the research that I also looked at, you indicated that mini pigs don't root like regular hogs do. I think the research I looked at says that they do, and I, one of the questions I would have from this perspective is that in the nuisance part of the ordinance, it talks about rooting and the impairs or interferes with the value or use of the neighboring property. Is that something that a determination that the Humane Society would do? Is that something that would fall back on, on, on city staff to make that determination?
Well, if we got a complaint that a mini pig was rooting in somebody else's yard, we'd have two problems. One, the mini pig was out of its own yard. That's a violation.
I guess even rooting within the yard of the owner, that potentially could have an impact, no different than weeds could get higher than 12 inches, no difference than, you know, buildings becoming dilapidated, that can have an effect on the property owners that are budding.
Correct, and that would be a city operation to deal with.
Okay, so it's not something that the Humane Society, so if, if there was an issue, don't call the Humane Society, they would need to call the city of Papillion.
Yeah, and if they called us, we would coordinate with the city, which we do all the time in Papillion and other jurisdictions. When we see a violation like that, we'll coordinate with the appropriate city department.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ingberg.
I just had a simple question about the vaccination process. Just some of the research I did, it appears that if not every location, certainly most, high majority of other places around the country that allow mini pigs require that process of vaccination. My question is, why do so many places require it, but the city of Omaha and the Nebraska Humane Society does not? Are all the other places wrong?
Well, one of our veterinarians led the effort on changing the Omaha ordinance, and I don't have the names of the cities that she contacted, but she contacted cities similar to Omaha's size who did not have the requirements for the rabies vaccination. So, I mean, I don't doubt that, that there are some that do. She found some similar to Omaha's size that did not have it. That information was presented to those five agencies that I talked to you about to help them form their opinion to us that the vaccinations were not necessary.
Mr. Gaines.
I just had a quick question on how many dogs, it said there's 92,207 complaints. How many dogs are licensed in the metro area?
We have 100,000 in Omaha. So I would, I would guess, I mean, a percentage, a small percentage of that in Sarpy County. So probably, I can get that number to you if you'd like. I'm going to guess 130, 140,000.
I think that probably answers my question good enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? And again, unless there's council questions, we do limit the time to five minutes, and if somebody mentioned something before, feel free to still come up and say that you agree with them. For the sake of time, don't always need to repeat it, but for the record, we will record it. If you'd state your name for the record, please.
Madison Hagan. When Tori came into our lives, I had no idea how much she would impact her family, especially when she became known as the Papillion Pig after successfully escaping our yard. Tori is stubborn and very, very intelligent. She expects the most love and affection out of all of her animals, and of course, I love them all the same. Tori is just like a dog, and it's her duty to be treated as such. She's super fast without one leg. She does not let anything hold her back. Tori has made a way into my family's hearts that could never be replaced. I love her very much, and I cannot bear the thought of her being taken away. And I know, and know that I want the best for her, and I truly do believe her staying with her family is where she belongs. Pigs are known as dirty and unsanitary animals, but let me assure you, she's very clean. She asked to have everything perfect in the way she likes, and I respect that. I mean, I have no choice, or she gets all sassy with me, and she does not budge. Pigs are not that crazy of an animal to have, if you really think about it. You just have to show them the proper care, love, and respect, and you're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, any other proponents? Again, she states your name for the record.
Leah Hagan. When it comes to mine, me getting rid of our pigs, it just breaks my heart. They're part of our family just as much as a dog would be part of yours. We adore both our pigs, Tori and Lucy. They are very much alike to a dog oddly. They are very loyal towards their owners and also love belly rubs. A few facts about a pot-bellied pig is they are one of the four smartest animals in the world. They are very compassionate towards their owners, meaning they need a lot of attention and love, attention and love. They're almost like a pink puppy. They are very active and want to play all the time, and they are very easy to house train. Today, I'm trying to prove a point. Hopefully, it has been made. We are all trying to change this law so only our family doesn't have to get rid of our pigs, so more people like us can enjoy these loving, fun animals in their, in their homes today.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents?
Hi, I'm Joanne Hagan, and I'm one of the owners of Tori and Lucy Hagan. And we've had pot-bellied pigs for three years. I never knew that it was illegal until Tori got out and made her famous run, and the Humane Society came knocking on my door after she had been captured and told me that in Papillion, you couldn't have pot-bellied pigs. So, don't want to give up my animals. I want to see if we can change the ordinance. They're not dirty animals, or I wouldn't have them. They're loving, they're affectionate, they're smart, they're real joy. I call them my pink puppies, because they love to be petted and have their snouts rubbed, and Lucy probably weighs about 80 pounds. Tori weighs about 35. Since Tori ran away and had her back right leg amputated as a result of that, being hit by a car, then we have to keep her weight down, simply because she doesn't have the fourth leg to balance out her weight. So we give her a lot of vegetables and fruits, and just really kind of watch her diet wise. She's still fast, though, even on three legs. And I guess that's all I have to say. We just really want to get the law changed, like my girls said, so that we can keep our pigs, and if other people want to have a pig, they can. I agree with the ordinance, the only thing, like he said from the Humane Society, is it would be really hard to keep them under 100 pounds.
Okay, Ms. Hagan, you've owned this illegal pig, I'll call it the illegal pig, for over three, for three years. When you got it, did you even consider whether pigs were, mini pigs were legal or illegal in Papillion?
No, because I knew Omaha, they could have them. In fact, the first pig we had was a male pig, and I got him from somebody that, whose landlord told them that they couldn't keep them, and they lived in Papillion. So that's how I got our very first pig. And he was wonderful, except he was like Houdini. He could get out, no matter what my husband did, to our backyard. That pig could find a way out. And he wouldn't do anything. He'd just walk around the neighborhood, and the mailman would bring him back. You'd see the mailman calling him and giving him dog treats to get him back to the house, but he'd follow the mailman. And so finally, we just, we didn't know what else to do with him. So we put him to the Humane Society, and they found a home for him.
Well, okay, when, when you got your first mini pig, did, did you even stop to consider that that might be the kind of an animal that we would have to prohibit and keep out of Papillion?
No, I didn't. I don't, I don't consider my pigs farm animals. They're pets.
Well, where does?
They're not different than a dog.
Where do your pets, where do your pigs live?
Tori has a kennel in the living room, and Lucy, she has a kennel, or she sleeps with my daughter in her room, she always has, and she has a bed about the size of a twin bed that she sleeps on.
They don't live outdoors?
No, they only go outdoors to walk around, exercise, root, and then they come back and go to the restroom. And they walk around the house.
Okay, now you live in a area that's highly residential. There's houses all over around you. Have any of your, and during the three years you've had that pigs, have any of your neighbors ever come to you and indicated that they had a problem with your pigs?
No.
Nobody's ever said your pigs too noisy?
Yeah, we haven't hid them. I mean, you know, they're out in the backyard and stuff. They've been out front on a harness whenever we took them to the vet or whatever. So it wasn't like we were deliberately trying to hide them from anybody. That's why I was so shocked that Papillion said no.
I want to, I want to be a little careful that we're moving into discussion and public hearing. But you're going to be here at the next meeting as well.
Yes.
And as part of the discussion, council will, will kid, is free to call and ask for questions. I just want to make sure we're respecting people's time and taking testimony and not having discussion amongst the council.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next proponent, please.
Hi, I'm Joey Hunter. I've been helping Mrs. Hagan and her family with this matter, along with Councilman Mumgarth. Per the request of Councilman Mumgarth, we did put together some photos of the living situations for the animals. Unfortunately, there were some issues getting that on, those photos onto a device to bring them here tonight to show them to you, so I'll be emailing each council member individually with that presentation, and I'll also email it to the city administrator so she can pass it out as needed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, Mr. Hunter, just on that point, what, what are the photos of? What can we expect?
There is photos included in the presentation of their indoor and outdoor living situation, of them being fed, and just the general size and nature of the animals themselves.
Okay, thank you. Please get those to us.
I will. I will get that to you guys probably right after this meeting is over.
Thank you. If you just want to send them to the clerk, then she can make them part of the record and they get them distributed. Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? Do you have any opponents? Anybody want to speak against? Anybody neutral? I'll close the public hearing. And again, just for those that are interested, either proponents or opponents, the next council meeting is, will be council discussion and a vote. And as I mentioned, council members are free to call people up if they want to continue some discussion with that. Item E2, ordinance 1792, an ordinance to amend the 2017-2018 fiscal budget. Again, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. It's all the regular agenda items, no committees have met. Any comments from the floor? I think we have some students here. You guys get to come up and introduce yourselves. Come on up. They're all looking at each other. Start lining up. Introduce yourself and what brings you here tonight.
Hi, I'm Tori Bailey, and I'm from Papillion La Vista South, and I'm a junior. And Mr. Keller is my teacher, and he's...
How is he as a teacher?
Huh?
How is he as a teacher?
He's great.
Okay.
Yeah, do I get extra credit from that? No. Thank you.
I'm Haley Keller. I go to Papillion La Vista South. I'm a junior. And I'm Mr. Keller, who's my dad, so...
I'm Bailey Johnson, and I go to Papillion La Vista South, and I'm a junior.
I'm Lindsay Allgayer. I go to Papillion South, too, and I'm also a junior.
I go to Papillion South, too, and I'm also a junior.
I'm Teagan Gall. I'm a junior at Papillion La Vista South.
I'm Baylin Conley. I'm a junior at Papillion La Vista South.
I'm Yohan Cook. I'm a junior at Papillion La Vista South.
I'm Tia Olson, and I'm a junior at Papillion La Vista South.
I'm Michael Bruin. I'm a junior at Papillion La Vista South.
I'm Spahnik Ball. I'm a junior at Papillion La Vista South.
Thank you all for coming out. Mr. Keller's coming up.
I'm, I'm Mr. Keller, and I'm not a junior. Well, actually, I am. I'm Raymond Keller, Jr. I just wanted to thank you all for being so welcoming to our students. I hear the writing that they do and their reports. It really is a valuable experience for them, and you don't have to take the time to do what you do here with them, and we really appreciate it. It really helps the conversation we have the next day. I think tomorrow we, well, on Monday, we'll be talking about mini pigs. It's really, really great, and it really makes them feel like they're a really valuable part of the community, so I really appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you also for doing the assignment you do, where you have them come out. I think it's valuable for the youth to see the government in action. And you give a unique perspective. If people aren't aware, Mr. Keller's on the Planning Commission, so he gets to sit in these same seats, hear the same types of discussions, and spark the same discussion and make the same votes that we make. So you give the students a real unique experience from both perspectives, so thank you for what you do as well.
Yeah, you're welcome. It is, it is really exciting. I mean, the Planning Commission stuff has been really interesting, coming in and talking about, they don't know what plaats are, zoning and all that, so, sort of like Plan SimCity, but with real stuff, and I think that's pretty fun, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the floor? Seen none. Any council comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Ms. Coomer, Mr. Sturzma, Ms. Myers, and I met with a couple of developers about some development projects. We also had a review of the National Citizen Survey that was mentioned, that that came out. The final report has been issued, and every one of you do have a copy of that full report, and we'll, we'll be some, going through that information as well. That report will be put on the website, so it is a public document, and we're going to make that available as much as we can and as easy a fashion as we can. But the good news is, the theme in there can tie, kind of like the last one we have, there's a lot of trust in, in the government, the local government, and, and what's going on. If there's any one issue, just from the quick read that I read of it, the one challenge, I think, that I saw is, we have a generally low, and this is nationwide, we're no different than other than benchmark communities, but there's a low level of community engagement. It's kind of the discussion we had with Mr. Keller, people actually coming out, getting involved with the government or other civic organizations. And that's not unusual. Civic groups are having a hard time recruiting people, so I think that's one of the challenges. How do we just continue to, to encourage that? But read through that report. If there's anything you see in there that either good, or where we've got some challenges we need to look at. I think it's really good information to raise that. But the National Citizen Survey, like the last time, said, "We probably had some of the highest response rates that they get." So from that side, they said, "Our community is very engaged and cares," because they did take the time and respond. And so because of the high response rate, the results in there, they claim statistically are within about a four percent margin of error, and they generally do not see it that tight. So take time to read through that, and we'll be discussing that more over the next six to nine months. Also, American Legion had a Veterans Day ceremony, and then we, the other thing is, because, just a reminder, because of the annexation we did, we have engaged MAPPA to help us with the remapping of the districts, and the proposed ward maps for the new districting will be on the December fifth agenda, and then those will be effective for the next, the next election. So the election commissioner is awaiting that. Community Center, groundbreaking's on the thirtieth at three o'clock. Again, a reminder, come out for Winter Wonderland. The lights go on Saturday night. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry, Mr. Ringberg?
I'm out of order, because when you said Veterans Day, reminded me, if council hasn't been by there, you might drive by Veterans Park. The two new entrance walls are now in, and I'm biased, but I think it looks really good. But I'd like to hear your opinion. If you get a chance, take a drive-by.
Well, on the backside of those, which is kind of the plain side, there's landscaping to be done, but just because of the time of year, that won't be done. So if you see a big plain site, that will be taken care of with the landscaping as well. So thank you, everybody, for that. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned.